On the agenda. And we'll excuse Mr. Councilmember Wilcoxen. And hopefully, he gets here soon.
Ready? Roll call. Councilmember Wilcoxen. Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Somerville.
Present.
Mayor Richardson.
Present.
Councilmember Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Simmons.
Present.
Councilmember Jones Chance. It's all present. There is a quorum.
All right. Thank you. They moved to excuse.
I'll move to excuse Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Support.
All right. It's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I either didn't hear from you, Councilmember Brown, Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
I'm sorry, aye.
Okay, all right. So he, the excuse motion carries.
Mayor, the next item on the agenda is agenda approval.
Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Support.
All right, moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the ayes have it opposed. I think all the, every, everyone here said aye. Okay, Mr., I see, Ms. Councilmember Steve Wilcoxen has joined us or is connecting now. Good evening, Councilmember Wilcoxen.
All right, council, the next item on the agenda is public comments. There are currently five individuals on these lists. If one would like to make comment, please raise your hand. And then you'll have three minutes to address council. Does not appear that any member of the audience would like to make comment. So we can move on to resolutions, motions, and discussions. First resolution, resolution number 2021-001, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, that the minutes of December 15th, 2020 be approved.
Support. Or so move, sorry. Or... It's weird when we're not the ones reading them still.
Okay. If council's ready, I'll call the roll on these. Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
I'm sorry, yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the next resolution, resolution number 2021-002, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the Ypsilanti City Council amended Ypsilanti City Code, section 102-81, to establish a Parking Violations Bureau for the purpose of handling all large parking violations within the city of Ypsilanti pursuant to the revised Judicature Act, Public Act 154 of 1968, as amended MCL 600.8395. And whereas the Ypsilanti City Council had adopted rules in 2016 governing the operation Parking Violations Bureau with resolution 2016-005. And whereas rules and regulations have been updated to reflect updates and changes in the system since 2016. And whereas these rules and regulations are consistent with the Ypsilanti City Code, resolutions adopted by the city council, the rules and procedures of the 1482 District Court, and the laws of the state of Michigan, now therefore be it resolved that Ypsilanti City Council approves the attached rules and regulations of the Parking Violations Bureau.
I'll move. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion?
Yes, I, this is Brian Jones Chance.
Yes, Councilmember Chance.
Yeah, I have a question as to the fee schedule. Since we're not updating the municode library, it's very difficult to access a fee schedule for a member of the public. How do we intend to make this readily available?
So this fee schedule is available at citaypsilani.com/fees and is updated separately from municode. And I believe that section of the website is updated regularly. Also, for many of these, so for instance, tickets have the fine printed upon them. And I believe, Andrew can correct me if I'm wrong, the fees associated with paying via credit card in person are posted fairly clearly at the clerk's office. If, if they are paying in person. And it is also available online as people are paying online via the RMC Pay website.
Okay, and then I had another question about the, this is kind of a minor issue, but the Visa payments, they look like there were two copies of the preamble. Are Visa payments allowed, or?
Yes, at one point, our credit card processor didn't accept it back in 2016, the last time these were accepted, or updated, rather.
So then everything from the second... It looks like maybe it got scanned in twice and one was the original, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so the first one in your packet should have been the original. The second one in your packet is the updated one that has strike throughs and underlines. Strike throughs are things that have been removed, and underlines are things that have been inserted.
Thanks.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yeah, quick question about instances where meters are broken. Or for example, like right now, to my knowledge, we're still not charging currency for parking. Is that correct? But like, a few weeks ago, there were several people who reached out because they got tickets. And I believe it was when... I think it was when we were like, low. I don't know if we suspended parking enforcement during the first part of the second, like, shutdown. Was that true?
Yeah, we suspended enforcement the same week of Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Prior, so the last set of emergency shutdown orders. But we resumed it on the 30th. And that was on the website, but you know, a lot of people don't check the website.
Yeah, and then, so like, I know at that point, there were some people who got tickets, but then we were told that like, they should reach out to you, Bonnie. And so like, I'm just assuming that going forward, while we're still in the pandemic, that's still going to be something that's flexible for people if that happens and there's confusion. Okay, I just want to be clear, yeah?
Yeah, it, one of the bullet points that I added this summer that is a potential reason for a courtesy void is issues arising during a state of emergency, including pandemic or weather-related emergencies. So a lot of people, what I've seen more of, are people can't get a residential permit because they don't know how to apply for a permit with city hall being closed. And you know, they mail in their permit application, and then we mail back the permit, but because everything's overwhelmed, it takes a few days, so.
Yeah, that was exactly what happened a few weeks ago when a few people contacted me. So, okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have one question, Mayor.
Yes.
Bonnie, you said the strike throughs was being taken out and the underlines was being added. And where this has a 3% charge for paying with a credit card and a 45%, $45 for return checks. I didn't see an addition, like, was that $45, was that... Will it be based on, like, would it be based on different factors? There's not a set fee for return checks?
There is a set fee for return checks, and it is as adopted in the fee schedule, which is, I believe, also what our bank charges us for that. And I don't know that amount off the top of my head, but I am assuming.
That's okay. I just didn't see it there. That's what I was looking for, something to replace the $45. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? I'm not seeing you, Councilmember Jones Chance. Did you have any questions, more questions or comments?
No.
Okay.
Council, if I may, the return check fee is $50, and that is what Ann Arbor charges the city.
So was that $45 what it was previously, so it was increased to match Ann Arbor's?
That, so it was $45, which is what the bank charged us in 2016. The bank now charges us $50, and so that is what we charge the consumer.
Okay, we just passed that right on. Okay, thank you.
If no more questions or comments, Clerk O'Linga, would you call the roll? Please.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Council, moving on to the next resolution. Resolution number 2021-003, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city of Ypsilanti adopted the Shape Ypsilanti Master Plan in 2013, which establishes guiding values and policy recommendations for the city. Whereas the Planning Commission determined in 2018 that a master plan update was necessary. Whereas the Ypsilanti Sustainability Commission drafted a sustainability plan in which the Planning Commission subsequently determined to incorporate into the master plan as a full chapter. Whereas the Citizen Committee Committee on Housing Affordability and Accessibility drafted a report and recommendations. Whereas the Ypsilanti Planning Commission has a responsibility of developing a master plan and any updates. Whereas the city of Yps, the Ypsilanti City Council has a responsibility of distributing a master plan and any updates for the public comment period in accordance to PA 33 of 2008, Michigan Planning Enabling Act. Whereas the Ypsilanti Planning Commission supports the draft master plan update and recommended city council distribute the plan for public comment. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council distribute the plan for public comment.
So move.
Court.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion? Councilmembers Wilcoxen.
I have a question for staff. I think this is to Bonnie, I guess. In this resolution, there's a statement that this is, that the sustainability plan was going to be added as a chapter. And I was on for the planning commission's meeting in which this was discussed. And I thought that they had gone with just referencing the sustainability plan rather than having it actually be a chapter in and of itself. Am I recalling that correctly? It got a little funky because a lot of people were confused about the ramifications of that. Seemed like the Sustainability Commission had one idea of what that looked like, and the Planning Commission had another. So if you could address that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. So yeah, councilperson, that's a good question. I know that there was a little bit of discussion at that meeting. And the Planning Commission did indeed decide to insert the sustainability plan as a whole chapter, not just by reference, but in its entirety as a chapter.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance.
Yeah, I do have a question about how the housing affordability and accessibility report and recommendations would be incorporated.
Yeah, so the, that report and recommendations was inserted into the appendix, and it was, or that was more by reference. Where we referenced it in one of our guiding values, that Ypsilanti is a place where everyone should be able to call home. And then we actually elaborate on some of the more land use aspects in the neighborhood section. But then the entire plan, or the entire report and recommendations on housing affordability and accessibility is in full in the appendix. They, to us, that, you know, that carries the same weight, just being in the appendix. And a lot of those, you know, a lot of those policy recommendations and things like that can be further, further decided on by the planning commission or by city council, too.
I see. I have some concerns with both the way some of the research was done and the lack of subject matter experts on the actual commission or that were consulted. So... I'm a little concerned about, about that report as it is now being included. And I'm also concerned about some of the survey participants not being reflective of the diversity of the city.
So in saying that, Councilmember Jones Chance, are you asking that, that that be held out for the moment?
If that's a possibility, I, I think so. I think that it would be worthwhile to extend, or I guess it's ended, but maybe form, reform the committee. And have more work done. It didn't seem like, you know, they were really happy either with particularly the diversity part of the survey respondents. And it also didn't seem like the discussion at the working session was as full as, as they would have liked or as we would have liked. And so it may be worthwhile to allow that work to continue. So in short, yes, I would recommend that we strike it.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Oh, I was just, I didn't have any, I'm thinking about that. That's an interesting proposal.
Councilmember Morgan.
Based on some of the numbers from the findings of those who took the survey, I was wondering, since it's not as favorable as we would like, what is being added to the distribution methods to ensure we get a more diverse outcome? So what new methodology are we going to incorporate with this?
Okay, I see. Councilmember Somerville, and I see Mr. Myers, which you wanting to answer Councilmember Morgan's question.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when the Housing Affordability and Accessibility Committee was originally created, we had recommended that they use a consultant to actually put together this plan, make sure it was done correctly. They chose not to and to write it themselves. And so the Planning Commission has recommended this go in as an appendix. So I don't know, Andy, can we take this back to, to Planning Commission say, council would like to see this removed and more work be put into it? What staff would have wanted to see is something like we did with the sustainability plan is actually pull together real experts and actually try to make sure that there was proper data gathering and things like that. But that, that, that didn't happen, so.
Okay, Councilmember Somerville.
Yeah, just to the point that Brian brought up, I, because this is one of my items that I'm including in my council goals. I do think that we need to reach out to some sort of consulting firm to help assist with this. So we can get, because I mean, I feel like there's still a lot of, there's still a lot that we need to discuss in terms of what we can do in the next, you know, two to four years. So yeah, I, I know that those conversations are happening next week, but I'd be really interested in, in getting a consulting firm.
Okay. Any other questions or comments at this time?
So.
Okay, Councilmember Wilcoxen.
So the question I have is, is one on process. So this is, what we're talking about tonight is forwarding this on to be distributed to the public for comment. You know, including that, that as an appendix. What recourse do we have at the next time this comes up in terms of taking that out or bringing it back in?
Oh, just to speak about the process a little bit. This hypothetically by state law be the last time you're required to make a review or, or provide legislative body comment on the master plan. The State Planning Enabling Act requires that the planning commission adopt, make the final adoption of the plan after the 63-day review period and after a public hearing at Planning Commission, unless you, council, assert the right by resolution to be the final adopting authority. So by state law, this would be the last time you need to look at this. So if you have issues with the plan going forward as is, this would be your last kind of legal state law, chance to speak, unless you decide to assert your right as the adopting authority by resolution.
Councilmember Morgan, you were, you had a comment, or you wanted to say something before?
That's okay. Um, thank you.
Okay. One thing that I just, whatever we decide, and we need to probably discuss it maybe a little bit more, is that we definitely validate the people that worked on that, that committee. They put in a lot of work. I believe it was a, a two-year process for them, but they worked on it. So I do think that we really need to validate all the work that they did. If we want to, oh, bring in consultants, I would like to see us bring in the consultants to work with that committee and extend it a little for a time period. But this is up to council.
So just to kind of give a little bit of context.
Okay.
You're already two years overdue on our master plan update. We're required to have one every five years, and our last one expired in 2008. By not adopting a master plan, we are putting ourselves at jeopardy for state funding all over the place because we are required to have one. Now, that's why it would be better to potentially request the Planning Commission remove that chapter until we can get more information and better information. And then, and then have that being worked on. And we can always add it to the master plan as an addendum to the master plan. That's actually much easier than adopting a five-year revision.
Okay. Thanks for that information. Comments from council?
The, I'd like to, I'd like to move that we request that the Planning Commission not include the Housing Affordability and Accessibility Report and Recommendations in the master plan made available for public comment.
Or.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Discussion on the motion.
Can I ask one clarifying question, Mayor?
Yes, and then Councilmember Wilcoxen.
If that happened, would, would the city council, like, could we pass a motion where if that is removed, then it can go out for the 63-day process? Which is a long time, or would you like to see it back? Just to make sure that that was removed, even though that would be a condition?
Okay. Councilmember Wilcoxen.
So it's possible to just say, under that condition, we could send it out once that was removed, and that, that would have to happen. I guess I'm thinking about the, the plan for revising that report. It's been discussed that, you know, getting consultant in, getting, getting more research done. You know, I'd like to know about that timeframe. And maybe that's the discussion that we could have next time versus right now. But before I vote to, to remove this, I want to know what we're going to do about it. And so Brian had, had talked about, and Joe had talked about hiring a consultant. What does the timeframe look like that, for getting that? Do we have somebody in mind? Would there be a request for proposals? You know, what's that scenario look like?
All right, Councilmember Somerville.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I mean, it's kind of relevant to this conversation. And I was planning on bringing it up during goal setting. I've been doing some research, and the Michigan Municipal League is supposed to be releasing some guiding documents early this year on housing affordability for the state of Michigan. I don't know if Francis, if city manager McMullen's familiar with that? Or anyone else? But I just, I found that in some of my research and thought, I don't know what time in 2021, but they said early 2021. So I think that would be helpful. Maybe we can try to utilize that resource.
I think we can, and I, I do know that that is, housing is one of the core principles that was adopted by the league, so that they are, were planning to do some real work on that. I had not seen the announcement that you made mention of, but I certainly can check with them tomorrow.
But back to, sorry, to go back to kind of what Steve just mentioned. I am kind of curious if this, if removing this gets approved by council tonight and then approved by the Planning Commission and then the report goes out. The, the main bullet point, though, of housing affordability and accessibility is still included in the master plan update, correct? Okay. Thank you.
And we have, Joe, if I'm understanding you correctly, we have 63 days to work on it and get it back to the Planning Commission to go back into the plan?
No, so that, so actually, I'm going to let Andy speak on this. He is much more versed in this, the exact technical language.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Andy.
Yeah, so this, so your action would be to approve, would be to distribute the plan for public and agency comment. That, that's a 63-day window, so if we choose to start that, I was thinking ideally on Thursday, the 14th, because we can do probably a public notice in the Washington Legal News that day. So that would start a 60-day, 63-day clock. Where anybody, anybody in the public can submit to us a formal comment, which we have to legally track and include in a, in a spreadsheet on what their comment is. And then at the end of that 63-day period, at our next planning commission, we would have, our next planning, we would have also a, a public hearing at that meeting on the plan. Then if planning commission is uneasy about the number of comments or the substance of comments or whatever, they could indicate that we go back and then review and revise our update based on those comments. Or they may choose to adopt the plan that was distributed for the 63 days. Does that help?
Okay, Councilmember Morgan.
Thank you. That was helpful. You.
you, how many times is the commission willing to revise it within that sixty-day period, sixty-three day period?
Uh, there wouldn't be any work on it during that sixty-three day period. That would just, this um, this draft that's distributed would just stand as that for sixty-three days. People would have the ability to comment on that draft. And then planning commission would review those comments. And if those comments should prompt further work um, or if planning commission decides to adopt the plan as is.
I mean, now if the first distribution probably didn't meet the success rate of the diversity in which we wanted. Now, if we did it and got a bigger net, it's a chance that the comments could be more diverse, which particularly could change or revise some of the master plan?
Yeah, so that I I think that that would be definitely a positive of um kind of re-looking at this, you know, the housing affordability report. Otherwise, you know, if 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 a number of people from the public um are kind of along the same lines as some of you council uh members about the lack of diversity of comments on the housing aspect, then they can voice their concerns and really make it make it loud during the sixty-day, sixty-three day window that they're not comfortable with this plan um with the lack of participation. So um, that's
And if those people are not mobilized and they don't participate, their voice could particularly go unheard.
So the the sixty-three, sixty-three day window, and anybody can comment, but I understand if if public participation is and, you know, an issue, then, you know, we may want to consider reaching out for the housing aspect a different way than this formal sixty-three day period.
Okay, I think some different methodology is necessary to get the, you know, a bigger net, but I appreciate you answering the questions. Thank you.
Uh, yes, council member Will Coxon.
So um, Andy, uh, Mr. Martin, I I wonder if you could uh you know, we're we're talking about public comment and lack of diversity in the study group, the or the committee that did the the appendix, but there were numerous public comment periods for the rest of the plan. Correct? And so so the question is, is like, are we? There were multiple points. There there was a point for the for the committee on affordable housing to get public input. And we all recognize and they recognize that there was a lack of of diversity there. How does that compare to the public comment for the master plan itself? Is the, you know, what I'm thinking about is like, how is that gonna change what's actually in the plan? You know, it's just like the in the the sections on affordable housing, you know, that got incorporated based on a lot of different things. Um, so the question is, is setting this aside and and going through that and getting more comment, you know, what was what was the comment like on on affordable housing during the the open sessions for the master plan in general? Um, and that's just something to think about. I don't know the answer to that question, and I don't know if anybody understands that question, but um you know, that's there. Um, this kind of brings up the the other question of, you know, if we're going to put this off and and do that, does council uh want to have another look at this before it's approved? Um, but that's for another time. We're talking about the the amendment to to take.
Am I uh correct in the understanding that there's an option to more or less verify whether or not this has been removed after we send it to planning with that request?
I, so actually, how your meetings uh uh work this month? Um, you actually, planning commission could review your your request on the twentieth. It's just when their meeting date falls. And so um you guys could actually send it out for publication on February second. Um, that would be a possibility. Um, you guys could send it out, but i- if council, if if the majority of council isn't comfortable with that section, this is the time for you to speak that. And that's why, that's why it goes to you first. Um, because it kind of sounds like there's there is some, there is some concern. Uh, Steve, as far as if council did want to set aside some funds for us to actually get real public input, um realistically, it probably costs fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars and an actual real and have a real survey done um that is, you know, uh actually done through a legitimate consulting firm who who understands how to do surveys for the community.
I I think the issue is sort of weighty enough that uh we should have another crack at it and be sure that we get it right. Um, and it sounds like we can strike it from being added right now and then making an addendum later on. So we can continue to work in earnest on it. Um, and just be sure that something that affects so many people is is really thoughtfully considered. Not that it wasn't, but you know, with with folks who are a bit more seasoned in either the industry or in survey-taking or um in real estate or the law. And also the, you know, I I think it should also be a citizen commission. I I think more or less the same folks involved should be.
Other comments? Okay, um, a question, um with uh Mr. Myers just saying that it would cost uh twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars for a consultant. Is there um, can we get some consultation? That number one would be cheaper than that or less expensive, I should say. And the other is, um, and I don't know if this should go to city manager um or to um uh, Miss Vassipica. If um, is that a way does the budget allow in any way for us to um afford that? Um, of course, it's not included as a line item at this point. Right. But I do believe that um we could probably find that if council so chooses to go um that way. Okay, thank you. That's what I was asking, if we could find it. Yeah, so. Okay, council, we need to, you know, maybe decide what we want to do so that we can move on from this one. Do we want to um have staff possibly look for um some consultation or a consultant to work with the uh the committee that we have that has been working on this uh and possibly maybe finding a way to reach out and pull in more of a diverse um response without going the full um gamut of hiring a complete consultation firm. I heard of Brian mention that we could possibly use some um people that are in the industry that have um much greater uh skills and knowledge than just the committee that we have. Um, Mr. Morgan, I saw your hand.
I I do appreciate a council member Jones Chance reasoning for um wanting to strike this out and add it later as an addendum. My question is, if we add it later as an addendum, can it be beyond the sixty-three days? To to take as long as we need to take to get it correct, to provide enough information for citizens, or does it need to be within that sixty-three day? To be accepted as an addendum is what I'm asking.
You would, we would need to do sixty-three days before it's officially adopted, but we can, and that's that's what the formal public comment window is required. Um, the timeframe that's required for the formal public comment window. But in terms of other public participation, we can take as as long as we want in developing that. And I, when I say we, I would, I assume the housing committee and planning commission take as as long as they want in in uh having public hearings or having input sessions in developing the substance of the plan. Um, we would also have that sixty-three days just for the formal adoption of the plan.
Okay. And 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 I I I think that this is a, this is a a comment. I think the city of Sillani is much more engaged and can be swayed and inspired to take more part in such something that's such as important as a master plan as opposed to spending close to twenty-five thousand dollars from a staff an organization point of view outward, but find ways to bring people in. I think there should be some time and some thought to that. I don't think we should always have to immediately go into our pockets to solve things. And I think there has to be, um I mean, based on all of our office hours and our connections and and some, and want to make, want to get the biggest response from, you know, from all the citizens that's that want to be involved. You know, I think we can do but like I say, halfway or 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 third of the way, I think we can make the push to bring people in. First, I think primary before we look to to spend money that much for something. Um, and then this is a very important issue, however, um I think uh asking for more inclusion is a, I think should 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 proceed going into our um our line item.
Thank you. Uh, council member Simmons.
So I I appreciate what we're talking about. I mean, obviously, right, it's better to have more voices um than not, because I think they they all add value. I think this is the struggle always when we're doing anything here in the city, whether it's our master plan or getting two cents on on anything we're we're kind of doing. It's hard to get people to participate um to take the time to spend the time. Um, it is, it's just hard. And so, you know, I think unless we do get off our dime and spend, you know, probably a fair amount of money, I don't know that we're gonna get a lot more kind of bang for our buck by delaying this. And so I'm not necessarily advocating that we do one thing or the other. I am having a hard time thinking about spending twenty-five thousand dollars of taxpayer money, though. Um, the um, this document, right, it gets updated every so years, uh every few years. Uh, Joe, can I ask you a question? How often do we update this master plan?
Well, we're required to update it every five years. We have not updated it since twenty thirteen.
Okay.
Um, but one of the reasons why we get most of the grants that we get from the state MEDC and 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 all of the various things that we do receive is because we are part of the redevelopment ready communities program, which actually does um require us to have an updated master plan. They have extended our certification, even though we don't have an updated master plan with the offices of us actually getting an updated master plan. So every five years, we're required.
Okay, so it's critical to have an updated master plan because it impacts the kind of funding we have. Okay. So if we update this, let's just say we update this now in twenty twenty-one, we're due to do it again and then twenty twenty-six? I'm sorry, twenty, yeah, sorry, twenty twenty-six, basically. When would we start the process of updating it? Like, what is the timeline? Would we start that in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-five. We actually started this process under Bonnie. Uh, we started this process in twenty eighteen. Um, actually, twenty seventeen is when we originally started the process. Uh, so it took about three years, um, just based on a lot of things, but uh, yeah, twenty twenty-six, we would probably start in twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so in twenty twenty-four, so basically in three years, okay, which in some ways seems like a lot of time, but as I'm learning on things such as Watts, uh, that's actually not because things are planned out years in advance. And so we've already kind of got the schedule for the things that happen in the next few years. I agree that this is critical stuff, and again, we need to get as many voices. But I I think that at this point, given the timelines, um, I would advocate for moving forward with this, but that we do the better planning the next time. We start maybe earlier, you know, twenty twenty-four seems like a lot of time. Maybe it's twenty twenty-three. And we really make um a more concerted effort, hopefully not at huge expense, but utilizing resources to move that along because again, I I do think getting as many voices is important, particularly representative of our community. Um, but I don't know that we're going to get quite what we think we may get if we if we delay this now, but it seems critical to to kind of move forward um to to keep, you know, staying in compliance, I guess, to be able to get the funding. And then the next one is is, you know, a couple of years down the line that we perhaps consider. Um, you know, particularly, we're still with, you know, dealing with COVID. We're gonna be dealing with COVID, you know, for the, for a long time in this year, if not the whole year. And again, I don't know that, you know, that is helpful in engaging people. Um, because I do think there are plenty of people who do want to come see, talk um versus get on the Zoom. And I think that we'll, we we miss people because of the virtual. We pick up a few people, but I think we do miss some people. So anyway, that's my two cents. Um, I I think I usually appreciate the efforts that we make here in the city, I think, in trying to get uh participation. Um, I I do think the struggle is real, and I'm not sure that we're gonna improve it unless we spend significant money, and I don't know that that makes sense to do given timelines and things of that nature.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council on the motion?
Yes, if I may.
Yes.
I think that maybe I have uh mischaracterized my issues with the uh, report as being only about diversity, and it's not. Uh, there are actual, there are some factual inaccuracies. There are um some terms that are improperly defined. Um, and there are concepts and actions that are recommended that have not been discussed, which you know, there are some studies that will show that this could have an adverse effect on affordability. Um, it's not just diversity. The it needs work. Um, and as far as spending money, I can understand the concern there. Removing, striking this from the master plan as an appendix would still allow us to accept and have a master plan. Um, this just removes this from the equation so that we can do the work that's required on it. And then we can add it back later as an addendum, as Mr. Myers said. Um, and as far as spending money on it, there are options. I mean, we have folks in the community who are in the industry, who are um in real estate law, for example, who can sit on the committee if they so choose, so long as we um, maybe make that a requirement for uh the commission. Um, that maybe some members be in some way involved in in law or in real estate or something like that. Um, so I think there are a lot of options, but what we should not do is allow an incomplete um, portion to go into our master plan. Um, this is an important issue, and we can have folks working on it and still have a master plan.
Council member Somerville, is your hand up?
Yes.
Okay, and then um, Mr. Will Coxon, go ahead.
Yeah, so just like on this motion, um, I do agree that there are some, there are some issues I have with the legality behind many of the recommendations um and some of the consequences behind those. So, um yeah, I mean, I'm gonna support the the motion. Um, I just, I don't feel comfortable moving forward with those recommendations at this time. I appreciate the work done. Um, and I do think, I mean, obviously, this aspect of housing affordability is still gonna be included on our master plan, but I think that um, I think that we should look, you know, further at the the um, what we want to include in the appendix.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Will Coxon.
I I saw that clerk Kalanga had his hand up, and I would, I would
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go after him.
Um, council, so the the Housing Affordability Committee was a committee of the planning commission, and I do not believe the council has the authority to dictate uh who the planning commission selects for their subcommittees. So that's something to keep in mind. And uh, Mr. Bar, if I'm incorrect in this uh, this statement, please.
Well, uh, you're correct on that.
So if I could get a little bit of clarification on that, council could not um, say, ask or um the planning commission to include, say, a couple of um quote-unquote experts or people that are versed in real estate law to be a member. We cannot recommend that to the um planning commission to add two or three people to that uh committee.
Council can recommend, but they can't require it.
Right, the um, the planning commission is a statutory commission, and it has a separate authority. However, council has the last word if you choose to take it to approve the plan. This has been indicated.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I see uh Mr. Will Coxon and then uh Ms. Simmons.
So. Precedurally, if if the appendix is taken out of this, if we request that they take this out. Then all of the parts in chapter seven that relate to the information that came from that appendix. It seems like that would be removed as well. Because just taking the appendix out and leaving all the recommendations in chapter seven um doesn't seem like that's where we want to be. So do we need to amend that uh proposal? To that end, um and you know, as as we move forward, you know, if. The Planning Commission doesn't take the the recommendations, it seems like we have a couple, couple options here. We, you know, we can remember, we can take this out and take all the the parts out of chapter seven that come from that appendix. Um, and that puts it into a place where. What we're not going to uh, are we going to send this back to the planning commission and say, do that? And when you do that, we'll we'll approve it for distribution? And that's another whole series of resolutions that we'd have to do tonight.
Are you finished?
Um, yeah, and but but then that that also speaks to the the previous thought that that um. You know, that we that we, if we're going to do something like that, then we make a resolution that that this comes back to us. After whatever public comment period that we see it before it's it's approved.
That this, that that we're removing would come back to us as.
Right, it seems it seems like it, you know, council is has a lot of concerns about the information that's in this as is. And you know, uh, a proposal to take out the appendix seems like it should also include taking out. All the information in chapter seven that came from the appendix. And if we're going to take that out and we don't have recourse to to have input into what happens. Uh, with what we think should happen. I mean, it could be that the the planning commission come back and says, you know, no, we're not going to do that. And um, here you go. And so then we have a document here that has nothing about uh affordable housing in it. Um, nothing new since twenty thirteen. And so I think all that needs to be thought out before we make that decision. Yeah, if I don't, so.
If I may, yeah, I think what you're saying at uh Councilmember Will Coxon is um just asserting the right to be the final adopting authority of the plan. If in your packet, uh, we included a little flow chart from our initial consultant, Beckett and Raider. About kind of the steps of this process. And that would be essentially step number nine, um, the optional elected body master plan approval. So yes, you would need to put something in in a formal motion or resolution today that asserts your right to be the adopting authority.
Can you point me to, I'm I'm scrolling through here, I'm I just.
It's like at the very end, I think.
Page. Page two forty-two of the entire packet.
Okay, uh, I will come back to you, uh, Councilmember Simmons. Uh, Joe.
Um, I guess, uh, Councilmember Jones Chance. Have you read the language in chapter seven? I think the planning commission uh with Andy's help has really kind of navigated. The not controversial things that the community really um brought to us during our public engagement sessions. And put that into chapter seven. And then a lot of the controversial aspects of the report were left just in the report. Is the report the issue or are some of the recommendations in chapter seven the issue for you?
Both.
Okay.
Okay, uh, yes, Ms. Simmons.
Oh, I I was just going to say that I'm not necessarily opposed to, you know, striking this part out. Um, it's more about what what do we do after that? Um, I do think I agree with what Steve or the Councilmember Will Coxon is proposing. Uh, that seems to make sense to me. I can, you know, get behind that, um, because I agree, we'd have to rework some things here for it to kind of make total sense, I guess, and I would wouldn't mind exercising our authority to be the final reviewer.
Okay.
I would agree with that as well.
Okay, so could that be a serve as a friendly amendment to the motion that we're discussing?
It's okay with me.
Would you like to off uh Councilmember Simmons or Will Coxon, would you like to offer that as a friendly amendment to Councilmember Jones Chance's motion?
I I would not. What I would like to have done is for Mr. Jones Chance to uh amend his own um. Motion to reflect the information that he just said. You know, if he's got, if he's got um objections to chapter seven, I don't know what those objections are. So if he makes that motion, that makes more sense to me.
Okay, Mr. Bar, um, how do we do that following proper parliamentary procedure?
We've got a motion on the table now that has to be decided. Uh, it hasn't been amended yet. The maker of the motion can change it if it's good with the second person that seconded it, or one of the council members can move to amend it, then it goes to a vote.
Okay.
Now, to amend the motion so that uh. Uh, to also make council the final authority on approving the distribution of the master plan.
Okay, I I think Councilmember Will Coxon mentioned something about chapter seven.
I I think he was referring to striking all the references to. The report and recommendations as well as the report itself.
Okay, Councilmember Will Coxon.
I I I'm perfectly happy to make the the resolution, and I had planned on doing this, to to make us the final reviewers of this document. What I was talking about was having was having Brian make the amendment to not only strike the the appendancy, the the appendix, but. But the the language that he was uh had had issue with in chapter seven. And so I didn't want to address that part of it, but I would, I will make the resolution to, after this is done, to to make us be the final, unless. The the final reviewers of this.
That sounded like a separate.
Yeah, right. So that's a separate issue. I what I'm saying is I I I'm I'm just pushing this back at Brian to make the amendment about chapter seven, to add that into his his resolution.
Well, then, okay, so then the only difference is, um, I would like to amend my amendment such that all references to. The report and recommendations also be struck from the uh master plan.
I don't recall who seconded that the motion, but are you willing to?
Mr. Morgan.
You're muted.
I'm rarely ever muted. Um, I like to accept that amendment that Councilmember Brian Jones Chance made.
Okay. Are we in right order, Mr. Bar?
Uh, yes, Mayor, if the maker of the motion has now amended it and it's been approved by the by Councilmember Morgan, then it would be good to go to the vote.
All right, thank you. Clerk Colanga, would you read the amended motion, please?
Request the planning quit, request the planning commission not include the housing affordability and accessibility plan and recommendations. Um, both in chapter seven and in the appendix of the master plan for pub prior to public comment. And council make final approval of master plan.
Okay. All right.
So that final approval is that number nine, that nine clause, that's the same thing that they were going to do separately? Is that added in there?
I think he had left that out.
Okay, it seems it sounded like it was the same thing, okay.
Right.
That that's fine, I have.
No, I I think uh when he restated his uh motion, I think um. Uh, Brian left out the others so that it left out that council would have the final say. I left that for a separate motion. Did I understand correctly? Uh. Ms. Councilmember Jones Chance.
That was my intent, but.
Okay. So, Andrew, we.
I I'm sorry, I I from what I understood is you wanted council to make final approval of the master plan in your previous motion, or are you waiting for that uh for a second motion?
That was going to be a second motion.
Okay, so then this motion would just be request the planning commission not include the housing affordability and accessibility plan and recommendations. Um, uh, in chapter seven and the appendix of the master plan for public uh prior to master. Prior to circulation of the master plan for public comment. That's all we are, we have right now.
Is that correct, Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Okay, and you agree with that, Councilmember Morgan? That's a yeah, I saw the nod, but that's a yes.
Uh, am I muted still?
No.
Oh.
Okay.
You don't hear that nod? The nod heard around the world, right?
Right, okay, all right. We have a motion that has been moved and seconded and uh is ready to be acted upon. Uh, so all those in favor.
Um, Mayor, this would be a real call vote.
Yes, of the all those in favor of the um amended motion, please. Um, please call the roll.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
I bet you, please.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Councilmember Will Coxon.
I would like to make a motion that uh the city council that after this goes out minus that appendix in the language from chan- chapter seven, that. City council have uh the last review of this before it is implemented as a master plan.
Second, or over.
It's been moved in second, and uh may I ask a quick question for? Uh, you said to have the last review or the final vote is your mo- just a clarification on your motion, not asking you to challenge it, just clarifying.
Thank you, final vote.
Okay. All right, uh, Clerk Colanga, would you read that motion back to us, please?
That city council have vi- final vote prior to master plan adoption.
Okay, thank you. Has there been a second?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Jones Chance.
All right, thank you. Uh, is there any discussion on this motion?
Uh, I just want to make a statement um concerning this motion concerning all. I know they said this master plan was from two thousand eight and um so the five-year review is two thousand thirteen. They haven't. Really got their teeth on it to two thousand eighteen. There's got to be a fail-safe. Um, way to track something as dire and important as this to keep us in compliance if this has to do with funding. So this is a very important. So when we think about the future. Uh, I don't know if we can trace back to what gaps we're missing to miss some of these important uh updates. Um, but I would like to make sure that we don't do that again in the future. That's, there's a way to find out how um some of these important decisions got missed. I would love to uh bridge that gap in the future.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Myers, did you, I see you came live. Would you like to?
The only thing I would say, uh, Councilmember Morgan, is actually the the a full read, the full write of the master plan was in twenty thirteen. It was due in twenty eighteen. We started the rewrite in twenty seventeen, but it's taken us this long due to some staff changes. So. We we were five years better, but we're still not good enough.
Pardon, okay, well, cool. We're still working on it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Clerk Colanga, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Uh, Councilmember Somerville.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to make a few comments before um we actually vote on the the resolution. Um, there were elements of the recommendations made that. Um, I plan on including in council goals um as we discuss them um later on this month. Um. I don't want it to, you know, for folks that were involved in that committee to think that like, you know, I don't I don't know where others are, but there are some things that. Um, just require a little bit of resources on our end or um. Community outreach, for example, working with Eastern, I think should be number one for us. As we try to address affordable housing, it's something that we should always be trying to do with the university, um, because a lot of our issues. Dealing with affordable housing has to do with the fact that we're a small city and the university takes up a big chunk of that. So um, there were also some other things, um. You know, like creating a a system for minor home repairs, like those are things I I think that we can incorporate in council goals. Um, as well as some of the visibility recommendations, um, and and continuing with the housing um fund. I know that we were able to utilize that for a really good need in the first part of the pandemic last year. So um. Those are all things that I plan on including. Um, I just wanted to make that clear for folks. Um. Uh, you know, with, even though we struck that out, um, those are still important. I still think that we can include them moving forward in other areas um while we work on this.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Uh, yes, I I would say that I I agree with that as well. And there are a lot of things, particularly around um accessibility that that do need a lot more discussion and were. Important aspects of the report that um that now we can give more attention to.
All right, thank you. Any other? Okay, um, Councilmember, I mean, Clerk Colanga, could we move on, please?
Council Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero zero three as amended, Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to resolution number two zero two one dash zero zero four. It is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that upon recommendation of the director of the Ypsilanti Department of Public Services and the approval of the Ypsilanti City Attorney as to form. The current request for transfer of Metro Act right-of-way telecommunication permit is approved, and the Metro Act permit granted to Great Lakes co- comments. On April fourteenth, twenty fourteen, is transferred to Everstream GLC Holding Company LLC. The transferee shall obey and observe all requirements of the permit.
So move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion?
I don't know, it's pretty clear to me.
Okay, seeing or hearing no discussion, please call the row.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Resolution number two zero two one dash zero zero five, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the state of Michigan adopted the Small Wireless Communications Facility Deployment Act in late twenty eighteen, which required municipalities to allow small cell wireless facilities within public right-of-way. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti adopted an ordinance to regulate small cell wireless facilities within the constraints of this law. And whereas Verizon Wireless has submitted an application. And whereas staff has reviewed the applica, reviewed the plans and application and has found that the plans are consistent with the requirements of city ordinances. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Ypsilanti approves the remaining sites on small cell wireless application two zero two zero dash zero zero two for the following locations, two nine three Olive, three zero one West Michigan Ave, and four zero one North Adams, subject to review by the city attorney.
So move.
Support.
Gee.
It's been moved and supported, and I see Mr. Akers has come live, Mr. Akers.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council.
Good evening.
So, as, as many of you know, uh, we, we've seen these applications before. The state adopted the Small Wireless Communication Facilities Act in late twenty eighteen, uh, which was a way to accelerate and encourage the deployment of these small cell wireless infrastructure within public rights away. Uh, the law provided a framework for us to review these facilities and provided specific guidelines that municipalities need to follow when conducting these reviews. Um, in response to this, the city adopted and revised an ordinance which regulates these facilities and their support structures in order to meet criteria of state law and our local guidelines. Um, as we've seen before, Verizon Wireless has submitted several sites within the city. And each of these sites has been reviewed based upon that criteria and that ordinance. Uh, the proposed locations are within the city-owned right-of-way. And based on that review and our obligations under the state statute, uh, we are recommending approval of these applications. Um, these locations specifically are part of a prior permit, which was partially granted in June of twenty twenty. Um, there were a couple of locations that needed historic district commission approval, which they received in December twenty twenty. Um, so with that, that concludes my summary, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Akers?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yeah.
Mr. Akers, who proposes the locations for the said spots um, that are being looked at? Who proposes those locations?
Uh, you, the uh, the small cell provider, so in this case Verizon is proposing locations. Uh, they, in a, they a lot of times coordinate with DTE on, you know, being able to site poles that they can locate their equipment on. Um, so it's usually done in coordination between the two of them.
Okay, so it's not based, okay. Would you happen to know, are all those in different wards or are they in the same ward?
Um, a lot of the locations are focused around the university. And, and there's a handful of them that are in downtown, and there's some locations kind of scattered in between. Um, I don't know what Verizon's rollout strategy is. Um, but, but th, those are the locations they proposed, uh, including these three. Um, if they are approved tonight, we would have approved, I think, thirty-one locations within the city. But, but most of them are around the university.
That's what I was gonna ask, and, and what's the cap, like how many, what's the, what's the max that we can approve?
Um, there's a maximum per application of twenty sites. Um, there's not a limitation in the law for how many we can approve. Um, we do have some guidelines that we can follow with, you know, as far as how tall we can restrict them. Um, and, and we can regulate certain separation distances. So we can say if there's one right here, you have to be at least three hundred feet from another tower. Um, or set of antenna, but there's nothing in the state statute that I'm aware of, which would give us the ability to um, limit the number of uh, uh, sites within the community.
In a pu, in a four point three mile radius, uh, how many um, of those five Gs wireless cells are like, like, it has to be a maximum number that can fit in our area? At a safe rate?
I, I don't know, I, I mean, as far as safety goes, I know th, these all are looked at by the FCC. And I know they've done reviews and studies on the bandwidth that they send out the signal. Um, and they determine them to be within an acceptable range, that's, that's safe. Um, but I don't know the answer to how many they can, they can fit within the city.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? I have one, are we in reimbursed, the city reimbursed for um, the placement of these sites at all?
So, we, we are allowed to charge fees for these sites, but it is limited by the state statute. So we're allowed to charge application fees for, um, it's two hundred dollars for a co-location, three hundred dollars for a new pole. That they stick in the right-of-way, and then they charge uh, an annual rent of, it's like twenty dollars per site per year. Um, and so it adjusts, I think after the third year, it adjusts with inflation. So the state's gonna give us new numbers that we're allowed to charge the, the companies. Um, our staff is inventorying these locations, so we know where, who to send the bill to when it comes due. But um, but yeah, that's, that's all governed by the state statute.
But we're not getting rich off of it?
Certainly not, no.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, would you call the row, please?
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons? Councilmember Simmons? Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
With six yes and one absent, the motion carries.
Alright, thank you. Um, well, let's just keep moving along.
Res, number two zero two one dash zero zero six, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the city of Ypsilanti was awarded a recycling and organics infrastructure grant from the Michigan Department of Environmental, Environment, Great Lakes and Energy Eagle for the purchase of public recycling containers. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti is interested in expanding public recycling access in the city's downtown areas and parks. And whereas it is necessary to enter into an agreement with Eagle to accept the grant. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Ypsilanti approves a recycling and organics infrastructure grant agreement between the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy and city of Ypsilanti for the purchase of public recycling containers subject to the approval of the, by the city attorney.
So move.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Discussion? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, would you call the row, please?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Resolution number two zero two one dash zero zero seven, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the COAM collective bargaining agreement with the city expired on December thirty first, twenty twenty. And whereas the city and the union have been engaged in contract negotiations on a successor contract. And whereas the city and the union have reached a tentative agreement on a new collective bargaining agreement for the term commencing on January one, two zero two one, and terminating on December thirty first, two zero two four. And whereas the city desires to approve the new contract it has presented. Now therefore be it resolved that the city, that the council of the city of Ypsilanti does hereby approve the new collective bargaining agreement between the city of Ypsilanti and the COAM for the term commencing on January first, two zero two one, and terminating on December thirty first, two zero two four. As presented and authorizes the mayor, city manager, and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city, subject to approval as formed by the city attorney.
I'll move.
Four.
Been moved and supported. Discussions? Comments?
Uh, yes, uh, maybe, this is uh, Brian Jones Chance.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, sort of shame on me for not requesting this earlier, but where can we find the previous agreement? In its entirety, a lot of these make references to other items that, you know, we don't see.
Councilmember Jones, that can be found on the um, city's website under collective bargaining agreements.
Okay.
And I'll be happy to send that um, to you electronically if you'd like.
Oh, I'll just pop it up right now.
Okay.
Councilmember Morgan, thank you, Ms. Jones.
I just have a question about um, the addition on number seven. I'm just, I was curious, where it says um, upon the change in rank and promotion, employees will be provided with two complete sets of uniforms. What was it prior to this addition?
City manager, could you respond to that, please?
I'm sorry, you're asking about the uniforms?
Yeah, just the number seven, the addition where it says upon a change in rank, we're talking about a promotion that employees will provide, will be provided with two complete sets of uniforms, so.
Yes, there was only one.
There was only one, so this is, okay, so they're asking for, okay. How much is a, is a complete uniform for a, a law enforcement officer?
Actually, I don't have that cost on before me. Um, if the chief is on, he can jump in on that. I think they usually have a summer retire and more of a fall, winter retire. Um, unfortunately, I don't have that cost.
Okay.
Um, maybe Reagan can look it up if he has it, to see what our uniform allowance is normally, but. It didn't amount to a whole lot. I remember when we were talking about it, I think there's only a couple um, people in that ranking. I'm gonna check if I, if I can find it, thank you.
This is.
Thank you.
I think when we talked about it, it wasn't even a thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's correct.
That's per set or per, per uniform?
Total.
Or two? So five hundred dollars each?
Um, how many rankings, how many people were there? And I think we just kind of.
Okay.
Like, the total will be a thousand for anybody that's promoted.
Interesting.
So where it says, a last question, on number six, where it says article, help me with these Roman numerals, that are thirty-six? Is that, okay, sweet, where it says benefits by date hired, it said the parties agree to replace this with. COAM benefits for all unit members effective one, 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 and include attachment provided. Where is the attachment provided by the negotiating team?
We probably have to get that attachment to you if that was not in there.
Okay, I, I, it's, cause I, I believe with Councilmember um, Jones Chance, which is, it's, it's like a, it's an asterisk. Well, I don't know what we referenced, I, it's hard to determine what, uh, I guess he's pulling it up now, but I, I would have to do the same thing. Um, that's all I, I wanted to know, thank you.
I have a question. It says that there's not a financial impact in the memo. Um, but wouldn't there be with the uniform?
I guess when we look at what we consider to be a major financial impact. We didn't consider that as being something, something that was major.
So it's, sorry if I am repeating a question.
It's okay.
Again, it, so one thousand total for everyone.
Yes, because COAM is command.
Right, yeah, okay, that clears it up, sorry, I missed that part, and I was like, that's an expensive uniform? Where are we getting this from? Um, is it organic? Okay, thank you, that clears it up, I'm no longer confused.
You're card in.
I am not muted.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Jones Chance, did you have something?
Yes, actually, I didn't mean to be laughing on that thing. Um, so, there's a reference to um, accumulation of the uh, of vacation. Section fifteen point one, um, that there's gonna be some language cleaned up. And then when I look down to the removal section, it looks like it's gonna be all the way cleaned up because it's gonna be removed entirely?
I don't have that in front of me, um, Kim, do you actually have it in front of you? When it say cleaned up, it might reference something already in the contract?
So, uh, some, there were like three different groups, depending on when they were hired, and some of that doesn't apply anymore. So, really, the only thing that happened to this contract was a lot of language cleanup, there were no changes.
So, uh, will that section be removed?
Yes.
Just changed, okay.
It probably no longer applies, is what Kim's saying.
Gotcha.
And so the significant point here is that it matches the POAM schedule?
Correct.
Got it.
Was that your only comment, um, Councilmember Wilcoxon, I did see your hand, okay?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay, no problem. Um, okay, any other questions, comments? Hey, seeing and hearing none, uh, Clerk Halanga, would you please call the row?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Council, the next item on the agenda was a discussion regarding employee reviews of the city manager and city clerk.
Sorry, uh, thank you, and I believe that uh, Councilmember Simmons is going to lead that discussion.
Yeah, so I've been having some trouble, unfortunately, with my um, city email to be able to kind of send that stuff off. I'm hoping to resolve that tomorrow with um, with Andrew, but um. Because I don't think anyone's gotten the copies, right? I had tried sending, okay, earlier, okay, alright, um. So let me hang on, give me one second here to bring this up. So I think, first thing is, when do we want to um, you know, start these, Fe, February? Is a reasonable timeframe?
I believe.
Or would we like to do them?
As soon as possible, because we are, uh, we are quite a bit behind time on them.
What's the initial, um, from the time we start them to the time we get a, an assessment or outcome, how long does that process?
Give me one second, um, Councilmember Morgan?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Simmons?
Oh no, I'm trying to access it from a different uh, file here, hang on.
Would you like me to allow you to share your screen?
Give me one quick second, and possibly, yes.
Okay.
So I have to see if I can access it from here. Well, while we're waiting, do you guys wanna see Winnie?
Yeah, why not?
Winnie is spoiled.
I know. Yeah, keep showing Winnie for a quick second, sorry. No, I wasn't tracking.
We'll get up and show you Max, he's up in the tall cat tower.
Winnie looks like she's went, living the life.
Is living the life. She's had a good day. I apologize, give me one second here. It's all good. I can show you guys Max while we wait.
Wow, that's a big cat.
Oliver cats are big.
Man, he lounges.
That is so cute. Max is boss up there.
Yes, he looks to be the top one on the cat tree. Luckily, our friendly economic development director, Joe Myers, helped me get that. I don't have a truck.
That was nice. Now, I thought you had three.
I do, yeah. Sammy is still kind of segregated in my bedroom. Things are still a little. Rocky between Sammy and the new cats, so.
Sammy was, did not like folks moving in on him.
I think Sammy's fine with the new cats. The new cats are like not fine with Sammy. And she's very delicate because she's fourteen, so. She has her own cat tree in my room.
I'm on the same screen with Clerk Halanga, with Chief Hov and Councilman Wilcoxen. I wonder how can I get my beard that color, fellas?
Keep living.
I am ready to share the screen, Andrew, I guess.
That's the easiest way, Councilmember Morgan, is just keep living.
Amen.
At the bottom of the screen, there's a share screen. I can just click on that, you should be able to.
Okay, give me one, let's see here. All right, give me a second. Let me download this here.
How wise you men look.
Okay, I'm actually impressed. I didn't think Andrew could grow a beard. Because you never had one at sidetrack.
I didn't know I could either.
All right, can you all, can you see this now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Basically, and I can share the other one, they're very similar with some differences with some of the questions, or some of the questions and whatnot, but I'll review this. Kind of quickly and then we can look at them and then hopefully tomorrow I'll get the other thing up and running and I can send them off, you can see them, but. And this was called from Michigan Municipal League, information that was available on their website for performance evaluations and also. I did some research. This was, you know, in twenty nineteen when I originally was doing it, but around other communities. And what they were doing and what they had available online, so kind of put that all together. To kind of have this draft here, and I think the purpose was to make this process, as it says, a positive exchange. And learning process for both parties, so not something that's, you know, necessarily feels uncomfortable and punitive, but a place where, you know, feedback can be given if it needs to be. But also, you know, kind of praise when that's appropriate as well. So as it says, it's a, you know, an introspective look. At the relationship between, say, city manager or city clerk and council, and it's an opportunity for communication. And to make sure that we're all on the same page. Moving down, I mean, it's obviously as the evaluators are, it's our responsibility to give an accurate evaluation. And so again, this is set up in an effort to do that and so that people feel comfortable being honest as well and open. And so at least leads you through some of the process, but there's several categories. It's rated in a five point scale, so, you know, we can provide a numerical value in each of the different questions and categories. One being unsatisfactory, five being exceptional. And, you know, if there's a category where you feel like you don't have enough information, you can leave a blank and won't be included in the tabulations, but. Again, this just kind of lays out the process, so everybody would be participating in a value, doing the evaluation. And. So after it's filled out and tabulated, there would be a meeting set for an oral evaluation based on the written evaluations. And from what I recall, it's up to the recipient of this, either the city manager, city clerk, whether or not that's done publicly. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's kind of their choice. And so we would have that discussion. Share this with them and then have that discussion. And this also requests a, you know, self evaluation by the party and also the job description, because I think it is, it's important to. Have those items in front of you, everybody who's kind of assessing this to make sure we understand exactly what the work expectations are and not just make assumptions about what they are. And this goes along with best practices in HR in general for evaluations. So before we were doing this, we've talked about different ways of how will we tabulate, whether it would be a group of people or. You know, there's been different options and obviously we can talk about that, but this was left where the mayor would provide the tabulation summary page to the city manager and then each member of council. And it would include individual council members scoring, but not identify them by name. Again, this is an effort so that people feel comfortable giving, you know, honest feedback. And there's some notation, summary notations and comments and whatnot that there would also be included. And again, just a reminder, there's no perfect evaluations, but it's supposed to be a thoughtful, sensitive, positive, effective attempt to move forward to meet the needs of the city. So here's an example of what the city manager's evaluation looks like. So there are several categories of fiscal management. And again, people can review these. Sorry, my dog's decided to play with like the most noisy toy that I have in the room here. So here's several kind of factors under fiscal management that we would be rating. Say this is for the city manager on, and when it did previously, I did have a few people look at it. I know Councilmember Wilcoxen reviewed this and. I don't remember who else, but Councilmember Morgan and Mayor Protem looked at this recently, so. There's also intergovernmental relationships. And there's several categories. I don't know if you want me to read these through, but I will send, you know, copy out, or I can send it to Andrew and he could send it out, the drafts. To maintain awareness, I mean, variety of things there. Again, there's a section for comments or suggestions. After each piece, relationship with public, management of employees and. I had utilized the job description of the city manager to kind of find the key points of work that the person, you know, does in that role. Relationship with city council, leadership and professionalism, and then any other comments that the person may have. So that's what that one looks like. The one for city clerk, it's essentially kind of the same formatting with just a variation, obviously on the different categories. But pretty straightforward. I know previously when, in talking with people, again, this was twenty nineteen. And I don't remember, you know, who exactly was involved in this conversation, but, you know, I thought that it could be good to have more of a three sixty review too, that we incorporate, not now. But start with this evaluation format and then perhaps we would take it then to the kind of a next level. Where we have kind of a three sixty review of maybe some of the staff that are supervised by these roles. Would be able to give some, you know, kind of do an anonymous assessment, not necessarily using the same evaluation form, but that might be something to consider. You know, to get kind of a three sixty view, because there's what we see as council, right? And then there's also what people's experiences are, and I know that was driven by particular concerns that we had in the past. But, you know, it's just something to consider whether or not that's, you know, what we want to do again. But right now, you know, it was set up for the first year to kind of do, try this new format. And then, you know, the thought was to see if perhaps in the future we want to. Then also do kind of a three sixty where, you know, it's also subordinates, you know, to of the respective roles that give some input in some type of evaluation, so. Like you said, if you want me to, I can bring up the city clerk one, but. I'll email these from this other email to Andrew. I guess he can at least get that out since. Do you guys want to see the other one? Have a quick look, see at that one, or?
I did review them when you sent them, but if you, if you want to.
All right, let me pop that one up too. And like I said, I mean, I'm happy to read through it if you want me to. All right, so we share this one.
Can I ask a question while this is going?
You sure may.
I think, I don't know if this is for the city clerk or, it's like, it's a series of questions, but they're really quick. One question is, when the last time has there been a review of our city manager and city clerk? And how often are they done? And what warrants a review? Is it just like a new hire? Is it like a performance evaluation based on some complaints? So what does that look like?
It should be annual.
Mister, I mean, Councilmember Morgan. In the past, they, the evaluations are due yearly. That's why I say this one is quite behind.
Both of these, have they been in their respective positions a year yet?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying. So I don't know if it's based on a new hire, like soon as they get hired or once they're a year into their role.
A year into their role, it should be.
The city manager and I are almost at two years.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I say it's behind.
Time flying, all right, my bad, no offense.
Yeah, and it's pretty standard, Councilmember Morgan, you know, a lot of businesses, companies, you know, they're usual, usually their standards to do, at least do an annual review, and that's really what this is about. You know, again, it's, the goal isn't to find fault or just find everything that's great, it's just to have a dialogue and communication, you know, as it says. To be thoughtful, sensitive and positive and try to, you know, make sure that everyone's on the same page and to be able to serve our city in the best way possible. And so us as supervisors, right, of the city manager and city clerk, this is kind of our obligation to do. Just like, you know, that would be their obligation to do for their respective staff. So, but, so here's the one for the city clerk again, the beginning page here is the same. And really, it's just some of the different categories. Clerk office duties, records management, elections management. Relationship with the public, management of staff, relationship with city council, leadership and professionalism. And I believe, you know, some of these things were taken from the previous evaluations that we had used, and again, other things were called from. The information from the MML and also kind of the style. And some, from some other municipalities and try to kind of utilize their job descriptions to try to key in information here, so. There is that. Let's stop the screen share. I'm just going to pop this over to, I guess, Andrew, if you don't mind, and you could send it out to everybody.
And Councilmember Morgan, had we been on schedule, these should have been done in July.
Okay, all right. I blame COVID, but. I blame COVID, but let's not point the fingers at us, okay?
Let's not feel sorry for COVID, but COVID gets blamed for a whole lot of stuff. Yes, Councilmember Wilcoxen.
So, is July the same cycle as the rest of staff? I mean, I guess this is a question for Kim Jones. You know, what does that cycle look like for the rest of staff? That's kind of a minor question, but. Every year when I go through this process and I've, you know, been in various places, it's always coincided with a set of goals. So, you know, I propose goals for my staff. I review them based on the goals that I sent the past year and go from there. Has there been consideration of separate goals besides the goals that that city council goes through for the city? Every year of having, having goals incorporated into this process as well. I mean, I know this is the first time that we've done this, so it's kind of like, yeah, well. You know, there's no set of goals from the previous thing to see that we've met that and, you know, that there's a transition that had happened, but was that considered?
So, so Steve, I, this was kind of, again, when this was being developed, and again, at this point now, it's two years later, right? So the way I know, I was thinking about it and had talked about it to some was that, to me, this would be our first iteration of this. And then it would be kind of an evolving process where, right, we could add in things and I thought maybe the next year or something, we would do kind of a three sixty where we would kind of. Either not necessarily pull every employee that works for, you know, but maybe randomly or something or whatever, however we did that. But goals, absolutely. So we can add and change anything here. I also wouldn't mind, and I think this could be reasonable, is to have our city manager and city clerk kind of review these categories that we would be. Evaluating them on, and I would, I would be interested in hearing their perspective of whether or not they felt like these were reasonable. Or is there someplace else that they may also want feedback? Does that make sense? You know, of like, this is an area of my job that I don't, I'm not sure that you understand how much, you know, it takes and entails, and here's some things I do. And maybe that's where I want to be evaluated. I mean, I think it's reasonable to hear back from them. So to me, this would be a process that not just, hey, here's what we think, but that, you know, again, each year. And maybe we are tweaking some of the categories, depending on what's going on, you know. Maybe one year because it's an election year, there's a heavier focus on some of that. Does that make sense versus an off year? That, that maybe, you know, we're not spending as much time on that. Again, I'm open to whatever, so. The sky's the limit.
And I have it right here behind me.
Yes, you do.
Yes, you do. Any other questions or comments?
And we don't even have to use this. If people have some grand other idea, go for it, you know, I mean. Not a problem for my end, so my feelings won't be hurt, you know. I just, you know, I want it to be obviously a positive and engaging experience that's not, you know, because this process doesn't have to be yucky.
I just want to say thank you for presenting that and putting your time and effort into it, and I see your human resources hat coming on. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, sorry, like, I wasn't tracking the agenda here. We're doing things, so. But yeah, I'm hoping my email gets situated too, soon.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Simmons and also Morgan and Mayor Protem who comprised the committee. For this. I would like to say, if you could get those to us, I know you said you would get them to. Clerk Halanga on tomorrow, if we could get those out so that if possible, we could possibly counsel if. You don't think that this is too short a time, have those done at least by the January thirty first or February one. If we get those this week, that would give us approximately three weeks to complete them. Anybody object to that?
Those have already been sent to your emails.
We just got them.
Oh, you sent them now. Okay, thank you.
So mayor, so I might understand, I wasn't sure, again, if everyone else wanted to kind of review them or the clerk or manager, but should we, are you saying, let's just proceed with what we have here? Get it done by the end of the month and kind of move on, and then we can continue to kind of develop and grow this process?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically.
Okay.
Does anyone object to that? Or have a different suggestion? Seeing none and hearing none. Are we settled that now that we have the evaluation forms, we would complete them and return them. Return them to Councilmember Simmons for the committee to tabulate. Councilmember Wilcoxen.
I thought there was, they were given to us for review and additions. Councilmember Simmons had asked for input from the city manager and the city clerk. About things that might be added to it or revisions to this, so I thought there was going to be a revision period and then move on to that.
Okay, if that's what council wants.
I mean, is that voluntary? Is that mandatory? It sounds like, is there something they may want to add if they, or they're right here in the meeting?
All right, no, so that's the question. It's like, but none of us, so you got. Oh, right, no. So that's the question. It's like, but none of us, so you got, you, you three have seen those, but the rest of us haven't.
Okay, okay.
So I, I was just thinking that, you know.
It's no different than what you saw two years ago, Steve.
Well, I know, I know, I know. I'm just, I'm just saying, right? You know, it's like, if there's any additions or, you know, I go with that. Then would that be brought up at the next meeting? You know, we have two weeks to review it. At that point, we have follow-up discussion and say, you know, yay, nay, here's what we want to put into this and have that conversation outside of that and then say, yeah, let's go with it. I'm, I'm all in favor of moving this along as quickly as possible because of, you know, how long it's been since this process has been there. And we're always going to learn as we go along. So it, you know, if it comes to this and, you know, we go through, we go, ah, we could tweak this, then I'm cool with that too, so.
Council member Morgan.
Am I, am I correct in hearing that the city clerk and the city manager may have input into their own evaluation? And if that's the case, do they state that or do they get a review once they get it and make additions like everyone else?
That question's to you, council member Simmons.
Well, I, I was just offering up that, again, whatever mode you wanted to be in right now. If, you know, if everyone kind of wants to see and review it and then, you know, give feedback, I say, I guess, why wouldn't the city clerk manager maybe just take a looksee and say, hey, may you evaluate me on this, this year? But understand that we also want to move the process along. You know, starting as a foundation and to see how this process goes. I don't think there's anything controversial in there. And there is absolutely, you know, room for someone to do their, you know, to add comments or if it's not covered. And so I think it's a reasonable process to use now. To me, like, this is something that's always worthwhile, you know, maybe improving upon. I know where I work, it seems like we're always trying to kind of improve the process and maybe add and tweak depending on how your job changes or whatever, but, and sometimes I think they just like change, but. Yeah, so I don't know. So I guess, I mean, I'm interested in hearing from maybe the city manager and clerk. But again, I'm not the owner of it, so it's whatever we all kind of think. I'm, I'm okay with either, operating either way.
I have no objections with moving forward with the form that you've proposed. I have no objections.
I have no objections either.
Me neither.
Let's do this.
Okay, hearing it, yes, let's please.
Alright, so now saying that, can the forms, are they, are they anonymous?
Yes. That's how we, the results would come back in an anonymous fashion. Now, the way, mayor, the way that it had been proposed before was that the results would go back to the mayor for, for kind of, uh, but if, if you, you know, to tabulate. But if you prefer, again, we can have the group, myself and council member Morgan and mayor Protem kind of put the stuff together. Or one of us could do it and then give it back to you to kind of provide or however.
And that was what I stated, that it would go back to, back to the committee to tabulate.
Not a problem.
So do we need a resolution to say, we're moving forward with the forums as presented and we have until January 31st to submit them?
Sounds like it was, right, to support.
We need a motion, I'm sure. So you moved, council member Morgan's second.
I support that.
Any further discussion?
Just for clarity, you know, again, returning them back to, we can either send it all to, to all three of us or you could just email it to one of us, I guess, and then we would come together. Yeah.
I would be completely fine with you taking the lead on this and me being the sous chef. I would support. Because I totally think you have, you're in the driver's seat and I would love to support, so. If it comes back to the committee, I, I'll still lean on your expertise.
Well, that's, I mean, people could send it to me and then we can come together as a small subgroup. And then just, I can present kind of so that someone else's eyes are on it as well. And then we can kind of finalize the drafts. That sounds okay.
Are you okay with that, Mayor Protem Brown?
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds good to me.
Okay. Alright, so we have a motion. Would you read the motion, Clerk Halinga, please?
Approve the, approve the evaluation process and have forms submitted by January 31st.
Okay. Okay, we've heard the motion and is there any more discussion before I call for the vote? Okay, Clerk Halinga, please call the roll.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Council member Morgan.
Yes.
Member Simmons.
Yes.
Council member Jones Chan.
Yes.
Council member Wilcox.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Brown.
Yes.
Council member Somerville.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Alright, thank you. Thank, and I want to say a special thank you to council member Simmons and her committee for the work that they have done so far and the tremendous work that they're going to do going forward. And yes, let's give them a hand.
I'm just glad to have the process move forward, so.
Yes. Alright, Clerk Halinga, next on the agenda, please.
Also, the next item on the agenda is the Boarding Commission nominations. One of those nominations was removed as you saw in my email earlier today. The other one is for Erica Lindsay to the Historic District Commission. And then the next section is the liaison reports, first being SEMCOG.
Okay, um, there's no, no real report right now from SEMCOG. I have been trying to forward everything on that I received from SEMCOG to, to the group.
Next, Wasna area transportation study.
Yep, we have a meeting in three weeks. I think it's on the 20th, so I'll have more to report after that meeting. We didn't have a December meeting.
Next report from Urban County.
Meeting on Thursday.
Alright, next is the DDA.
Good evening, council. We have a meeting in about two weeks, talking mostly budget.
Hi, Christopher.
Hello there, Mr. Jacobs.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you too.
Next report is Friends of Rutherford Pool.
That meeting is tomorrow night, so I'll give an update at the next meeting.
Onto council proposed business.
Okay, well, in this, let's start at the top of my screen, council member Wilcox.
I knew you were gonna do that. Let's see. Peninsula Dam, I reported last time that, you know, RFP had gone out, there had been three, three proposals from seven different firms and different, different combinations coming through with that. Those are in hand, we're reviewing those now, there's, you know, Christopher has those as well, there's a worksheet to go through and evaluate those. And sideways side, we're required to take the lowest bid that is qualified. And so, you know, part of that assessment process has to do with, you know, what the qualification is. They're all, they're all great firms, they all know what they're talking about. So, you know, that should be forthcoming and those will be approved within the next couple of weeks. I think the deadline is either the 8th or 11th, I don't know, Christopher can, can correct me on that. So those are moving forward, there's some committees involved with that, that will have initial meetings in the next couple of weeks. And so I can report back at the next meeting about what that looks like. There's been, I'm, I'm just wondering where, where we are with some of the policing issues that, that had come up over the summer. You know, the chief and the city manager had, had had some town halls, there'd been feedback from that. There are some things going forward with that, so I'd, you know, like to know what the update on that is. There's also discussion about the current lawsuit, and I don't know how much we can discuss that in this setting and how we go about doing that, but there have been allegations, and that's public knowledge, so that's, that shouldn't be a problem. But I think we need to deliberate as a body in terms of, you know, how we're going to address that. And I would like input from, from Mr. Barr about what the, how we could go about doing that in a public meeting and whether we have to have that in a public meeting or in a closed meeting. So if you could address that for a moment.
Yes, I've been talking with the city manager about this issue and I'm working toward setting up a closed session to discuss the case with council.
So that will be coming in the next couple of weeks or we had a regular council meeting?
Regular council meeting unless you want a special meeting. Usually what I do is set it up for six o'clock on the evening of a special meeting.
How does it, sorry?
No, let's go ahead, I'm done.
How does it work virtually, just a private Zoom meeting?
So yeah, I've been actually thinking about this for, for a while, how we would do this. I would, I would set up two Zoom meetings. One would be published for the public to access and then we'd have a, a, a second Zoom link that would be provided only to those attending the closed session.
Okay.
Mr. Barr, if we could have that sooner than later, please.
Yes, I did work some on it today. I was trying to work something out by tomorrow to set up the date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have been working with Mr. Barr and consulting him as far as how to move forward. It was my desire to give council an update, so I did present these to him. And he did promise me on today that he would get back with me. And he did to let me know that we could do a closed session. So it'll be at that time that we'll give you an update and we'll also have the MML there as well to provide what they're doing, but I'd like to provide you guys with some background as well.
Alright, thank you.
Great, thanks. I, I guess that's it, I mean, for, for my business.
Okay. Dropping down one, council member Somerville.
Okay, um, I have two items to bring up. One, I found somebody to apply for the Human Relations Commission from Ward Three. So as soon as that gets in, I think we'll all get it and hopefully someone will support it. The constituent's name is Olivia. She was recently married, so I don't actually know her last name off the top of my head. She used to live in Ward One downtown, but recently purchased a home in my ward. I, her mom's my neighbor, so I know a little bit about her. But she's very committed to the city of Ypsilanti and she was actually nervous about applying for a board because she thought that like moving would be a complication, like in the dates and times that she lived in a certain, excuse me, ward. So I've been trying to encourage her for a few months now to apply, so I think she's finally going to do that. So hopefully we'll be able to see her nominated for the Human Relations Commission soon. I'm still working on another, because I know we, we need, how, how many people are on, I'm sorry for always asking this, Andrew. How many folks we have on the Humanities Commission right now?
So, right now, there, and there is a member that is seeking reappointment that was sent to council while, in a few emails, Devika Shudri, she'd like to be reappointed. Other two members on that and then one member that is not active. And her term, I, I'd have to check on the, I think it's this summer, her, her term.
Okay.
We have three current seated members, one whose term just expired, but who would like to be re, reappointed, that's Devika Shudri. And so, right now, and it's a nine, nine member body.
Cool, so I guess like right now, if anybody wants to support that reappointment for Devika, I would be supportive of that. Sorry for, I was locked out of my email for like two weeks, so part of that, I think, things are just gone forever for me, but I'm trying to dig through them, so I don't know if anyone's interested in that reappointment. Cool, looks like council member Wilcox is, great, so look out for the Olivia application. And then, yeah, I, I also am interested in nominating, Tim Sabo applied for the HDC, I think, two months ago. And when I, when we brought up the last nomination for the HDC, I didn't think there were any available spots, but I think there may be now, so. I could send, resend the application for Tim, but it was a very compelling application for the HDC. I don't know if anyone has major thoughts about that, I could just send it around.
What was his last name again, please?
Sabo, S A B O. I can forward it, I think we got it sometime in November.
Right, yeah.
So I could reforward it around, but it would be nice to see, you know, someone new on the HDC. And I mean, his, his application was very good, so.
Alright, thank you.
And then, oh, sorry, I lied, I have three things. The other thing, given some of the weather that we've had, I was kind of hoping we could maybe publish on both the webs, well, I think it is on the website somewhere, it's just hard to find, but maybe publish on our social media accounts, just the prioritization levels for different parts of the city in terms of plowing and shoveling the sidewalks. Just so folks, when, as you know, every time there's snow that sticks to the ground over, you know, two inches, people get concerned both for residential sidewalks and city-owned sidewalks and parking lots. So it would just be nice to have that like at hand where we can share it with people when the issues get brought up, but also just kind of like, if there's a way for us to kind of give some sort of like live update, like, we're focusing on this area right now, like, I don't know how possible that is, but I think the more information people have in terms of prioritization and, and where we just, like, I'm especially bad. We haven't had a really bad weather day yet, I mean, we had the one day and evening of snowfall, but obviously, we still have a few more months of winter. It's always a heat, a hot topic, so just if we could maybe get the information out on social media and maybe a link to the website where they, where the information is provided. There are some outdated pieces on the snow ordinance elements of the website too, that folks have found and maybe we need to update as well.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Nope, just the, the fun topic of snow removal and appointments.
Okay, thank you. Council member Morgan.
Thank you, mayor. I got a few things, and most of them are just, I more than likely just showing gratitude. Well, Y-PAC had a meeting December 17th and the next one, I believe, is the tw, the 21st, let me double check, of, 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 of January. The next, the next one is January 28th to 21st. And we were talking about the Maryland More Scholarship for, for Y-PAC, why that's important. We're talking a little bit about, I think the chief is definitely discussing cop, the community policing, new agenda that's, police have. And I sent council late today, something that I was pushing around with, Gail of Y-PAC can dedicate to make a change, she's on a commission there, it's called Civic. And that's, I think, it's the Citizens Interactive Virtual Inclusion Curriculum type of deal. I just threw it around as a skeleton, because I think some of these things in conjunction to increase police and citizens' interactions is gonna be some of the things that we're gonna be sure to discuss. And so I want to bring that up. The rest of them are, I want to thank, I think the guys who, who continue to do right here down next on River Street, the Food Distribution Center, I think is beautiful, I think, I think this may be Tyler Weston and DeRiel Graham, whoever else involved in that, I think people come in and making use of the codes and the food. I think it's an amazing thing to have, and I'm seeing people duplicate those efforts around the city. I want to say thank you to the cream, who did the COVID relief tour. And helping that out was the YPS superintendent Elena Zachary Ross and Anthony Williamson. Had a lot to do with it. And helping that out was the YPS Superintendent Elena Zachary Ross and Anthony Williamson, had a lot to do with it. True Johnny, they gave so much stuff out to a couple hundred families. That was December 19. And I want to say thank you. We did the first annual Everybody Eaten with bottles and backpacks. Kiara and Dieta McLemore with Mopies, Medias, Biggies, and four restaurants gave about over 200 meals, fed over 800 families. It was a really big event. And Cuppy's, I think Cuppy's the fourth one. So those, all the groups involved, Theresa Delati helped out with, his name was Delivery.com. That's where he delivered a lot of the meals to the seniors in conjunction with the event that we had over four days. And I gotta give a shout out to the Students Demand Action from Ann Arbor and the Ypsilanti for Grace Bonner. She has successfully, two years in a row, helped feed families for Thanksgiving and give gifts to families here that has been victims of gun violence here in Ypsilanti. Student groups have raised money, like I said, to give gifts and provide a feast for these families, and it's just amazing. So even through COVID, it's just been a lot of different support for the system, I mean, for the, um, support for the people who've had it tough and some families who have some uncertain futures. And I just want to say, um, every day that I'm, I'm, I'm doing service for the city of Ypsilanti, I'm feeling more and more grateful and optimistic. I know a lot of different municipalities and states and different things have their own turmoil, but I do believe that YPC is staff and its employees and as council does its best to meet the needs of our citizens every day. So I just want to say thank you, and that's all I have for now, Mayor.
Thank you, and I just want to say thank you to you, Councilmember Morgan, and all of those that worked with you on the, the feeding the, the 800 families. And I heard nothing but excellent, excellent reports on that. So thank you. Appreciate the work that you do outside of the council chamber for the city. Thank you.
Thank you for the city's support. I appreciate that.
Yes. Good. Councilmember Simmons.
I don't really have much to say. I just want to say also, thank you, Councilwoman Morgan. I know you're doing a lot of things, so thanks for that. But other than that, I don't, I don't have anything else to share today.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. I actually don't really have anything to share. I've just been following this tree cutting thing. I don't know, that is my sticking point, I guess, for end of 2020 and '21 right now, so that continues to be underway. And I also just want to give thanks, like Councilmember Morgan did, to all of the individuals who have been working really diligently to support our community members and also city staff, our city manager, clerk, and all of city staff for all the work that has happened. This 2020 was a doozy and tons of work, and 2021 has begun, and it's gonna be more work. But I know that we can do it if we all work together, so thank you all, and I look forward to a positive 2021.
Very good, and thank you. I think you said that two operative words work together, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes. Oh, okay, Councilmember Jones Chance.
Nothing for me.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilman, I mean, Cloke Linga.
Mayor, next item on the agenda is communications from Mayor.
Okay, all right, well, let me just say Happy New Years again to everyone. And I think we're all really kind of glad, even though we're not, things have not completely cleared up, but I think we're all happy to hear, to be able to say 2021. And usually, the first couple of weeks of New Year, I'm still writing the old one, but I've had to sign the date a few times. And I've just automatically went to 21. I think that we are all really glad to see 2020 go. Again, I want to thank, I would just like to thank the staff and all that they, for all the complete staff, for all that they have done for the city and for being faithful and working during the, the hard times when, with the shutdown, the open up, the shutdown. And it looks like we're going to have some of the same, uh, here, in, at least in the early part of 2021. I'm hoping that it's not going to be that much longer. I did hear on a meeting on Monday, yesterday morning, with the, county commission chair was on that meeting with Representative Dingle. And he was, as what I heard, and I, there were not a lot of details, but we do have some vaccinations available here in the city. I, my intent was to speak with him today, but I wasn't, that didn't happen. But I will speak with him to see who those are going, the priority, when those will be available to, and who they will be available to, how soon. I do believe that, that is, is necessary. And I'm, I mean, not just necessary, but it's exciting that there are some available. I think it was Councilmember Morgan that brought up and asked, I believe it was, or maybe Councilmember Wilcox, and asked about the, the proposed changes or things that were going on with the police. And I heard somebody mention the police chief's cop plan. I want to, I don't know if you heard the news this, this afternoon or this evening. I found it very, very disturbing and heart-wrenching, heart-touching, that the police officer that shot Jacob Blake seven times in the back while holding his T-shirt in front of his kids, an unarmed black man. Once again, the officer was found that there was no excessive force in that. Mr. Blake is left paralyzed from his waist down. I don't understand it, being a black woman and knowing all the history and knowing the history of police in this country. We have got to make a change. I am so, I'm happy that we have not had that kind of incident in the near or, or distant past. I know in other, in times past, we have had officers shooting of black men in the city. But I'm grateful that we have not had them in the, the near or recent history. I hope that we do not have them. It's devastating, and I think that we all, as a people, black, white, brown, yellow, whatever color. I think that it's up to us to begin to definitely speak out and to not just say, oh, tis, 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 or shake our heads. This is something that's terrible. No, it's time for it to stop. Just even, you know, just at the end of the year, another unarmed black man was shot and killed in his own garage. I don't know. I don't have the complete answer. I think the answer does lie within us. As a people, we have to begin to take it all serious and begin to say, hey, enough is enough, and it needs to stop, and begin to be willing to speak up. And to help us know what to do, the Michigan Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials, we worked on this for several months, and it is now available on the MML site. Michigan Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials is an affiliate of both the National Black Caucus of Locally Elected Officials, which is, and comes out of the National League of Cities. But we are an affiliate of Michigan Municipal League. We are a group that's, we're celebrating, we'll celebrate our 15th year this year. But we work very diligently on what we call a racial equity playbook, and it's dealing with police and community relations. It is available. Anyone, any of the council members can go on MML site and download it. It is very well-written. It really gives municipalities some real insight on what can be done, what they can do, and how to handle situations between, when there is inequitable relationships between the police and the community. And I just would encourage all of council to please, please download it. It's, as I said, it's very well-written and very well illustrated. So, um, the other thing is, I have asked, and I have not spoken directly back with him, and I guess we'll find out when we do have our closed session and I, on the lawsuit, and I hope it's sooner than later. I did ask Mr. Bar if it was possible for us, council or mayor, however, whoever, to call for an internal investigation in our police department to see just what's going on behind the scenes there, that one of the officers would be able to even have material that would allow him to file a lawsuit. I am definitely a person that believes that where there's smoke, there's fire. And I think it would behoove us, if we could, to find out if there's really anything there that is not right, and that really led to this lawsuit, not just with, if there's something that's going on, not just with this one officer, but also with others. And he's still checking on the, I am, I'm, I'm believing that he's still checking on that. He said he needed to check with the labor attorney, and I believe we'll get an answer as soon as he gets one. Let's see. I believe that's all that I have for, for this evening. I just hope everyone has a, a good year. I do believe that this year is going to be better than last year. And I think that everybody's talking about getting back to normal. I don't know if we really want the normal that we had in the past, and I think, looking back on it, that normal might not have been as good as we really thought it was. So I believe that we're in for a new normal, and what I've been experiencing over the last 11 months, 10 months, 11 months, or whatever, nine months, is that it's almost like a new normal daily. So let's just all continue to do what we've been doing, stay safe, and work together. And I think, I was very serious when I said, when Mayor Pro Tim Brown said that, talked about us working together, and I do believe that worked, as we work together, we will make it through this and that the city can come into a whole new place on the other side. So I look forward to working with all of council this year.
Council, next item on the agenda is communications from the city manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council, and Happy New Year to everyone. Got a couple of things I wanted to touch on tonight. Just wanted to let you know that City Hall is open again, and it's only open on the first floor to allow for payments. The other departments still remain by appointment only, and I'm following closely what the county health department is doing. And as more of the county is vaccinated and the curve is really realized, and we get some information that it's okay to start allowing people in. I'm gonna take my cue from the county health department. So right now, we're still at only allowing people on the first floor. Also recognizing that masks are required in the six feet distance as well. We are still encouraging people to use the Dropbox and also to use the phone and the internet for electronic payments and things as they can, so we're still doing that. A couple of updates on some of the city projects. We've been working on Water Street, as everyone knows. Sometime, maybe the beginning of February, we may have them come back so that we can have an update, and we can talk about this further with the public. I believe that this month has taken up for us, seeing that we do have goal-setting on the 12th and also on the 19th. So please remember those as well, and begin to jot down your goals and be prepared to discuss this, so that when we get to the meeting, we're prepared and know where we want to go. I think we will start with looking at the previous goals we had, deciding what has been accomplished, what we want to keep and what we don't want to keep, and then moving forward from there. I think you all know that our facilitator is Dr. Bernstein from EMU. We had him a couple of years ago, and he's going to be back facilitating for us, and so we're happy to have him. A couple of the projects, the I-94 Bridge Overpass project was moved up. It was slated by the state to be for construction in 2023. Now it's moved up to 2022, along with the road diet, so we're excited about that. We've continued discussions regarding lighting and maintenance, and we pretty much got that going pretty good with the township and the Washington County Road Commission. Another quick thing, the city is offering a parking amnesty program. I think maybe you've heard about it. If not, it's allowing people that have tickets, outstanding tickets, up to 2018 to have, to pay a reduced fee without all the late fines. And we're looking at this to be something that will encourage them to pay up their tickets and to receive the, the discount, the refund, and to have it go away to receive that forgiveness and clean the slate. So that is actively being publicized and is actually occurring right now. If you want to buzz that around in your, in your awards, we have posted it on social media, and we'll continue to do that. One great accomplishment is IT migration has been completed. It has occurred and it's been completed. That was something that had been on our radar for so long, and it actually seemed like it's something that was far away. I remember when we started this discussion back when, oh my God, I believe City Manager Lang was here, could have been before him. But actually, it has, it has happened, and our new service provider is Due Point. And if you have any questions, please reach out. I also officially want to thank Christopher Jacobs for managing this project, and I want to thank Joe Meyer for working along with him and lending him, because he is his staff person, and lending him to oversee that project for us. I want to, to give them a huge shout out and thank them for taking on this. This was a very challenging process. No one has done this before here at the city, from the RFP process, going through all the questions to where we are finally today. And so I want to publicly say thank you. There are some bugs that are still being worked out, but they are attentive and they are very responsive, so I want to say thank you for that. Also, we are in the process, and we are continually seeking grants for park improvements. And so we are currently entertaining some park improvements for Frog Island. You'll be hearing about that soon. We will probably have a presentation to let you know what we're looking at. But we're in the process of applying for some grants from the DNR that's going to help us to improve our connections even with the county's park system. And something's great's gonna come out of that, but I just kind of want to give you a heads up on that, and even some And um something's great is going to come out of that, but I just kind of want to give you a heads up on that. And even some possible um park improvements. Have come about for pin down. So stay on the lookout for those. Um the audit report has been completed. And I'm happy to say that the city has received um an another clean report. Um and I'm excited about that. Hats off and kudos to our finance department and to all of our department heads who manage our budgets. Um and for working with me to stay within our budget and to be fiscally sound as well as ethical in our practices. And I really do appreciate that. Um a report is forthcoming. I believe um we wanted to have it at the next uh council meeting. However, I am going to make sure that when we have our goal setting sessions, there are no items on those. So Andrew, please help me to keep those separate. Okay. Uh let's see, what else I wanted to say. Um we will be updating the website regarding snow removals so that the public is aware. Of the routes and that they are aware of uh DPS's prior to prioritization. As we all know that that did change. Um from last year. Um so we are no longer, sidewalks are no longer uh down the line, but they're um in priority. Uh along with our lots. So we will start to publish where they are going and just to give the public some information. So that they are aware of what to expect.
Thank you.
Um you are welcome. And I think I will stop there. I have so many things that I could tell you on tonight. It seems like we haven't met in a long time. But please look out for the C I L and always remember that you can reach out to me via phone, text mail or email. Um with any questions um that you might have. And I'll conclude that tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Simmons.
Just a couple of questions. Thanks for all that information and and maybe it's better to to chat offline. So I'll just ask. Um I was curious about kind of what is our plan um for vaccinations, particularly for our first responders. Um and if you plan speaking more in depth, I know you kind of mentioned some things tonight, but just that was something in my mind. And so there's that piece. And then audit, um I noted there was a couple of material weaknesses and I had some questions about that in the report, but I guess we'll be talking about that in the future. So to get clarification on that.
Thank you. I will send out um an update just to let you know where we are on vaccinations. Our first responders, I think, have already been offered that, offered them. Is that right, Ken? Are you guys, have they come to you yet?
Yes, they have. The county's already offered. Uh there's, there's not a lot of us that have taken it, but the ones that I have uh that have taken it, I have taken it myself. We are taking it at the E M U Communication Center. I get my second shot on the twelfth and then I will have uh finished the series.
I'm so glad to hear that. Okay, great.
Very good. Yes. I have been in discussion with our H R director um as to what point we want to, we are right now just strongly urging people to take it. And um I don't think that we can require them to take it, but but we are strongly urging. And so um we're going to put our publication to employees that when they're offered, you know, to strong, to strongly consider taking it. And to talk about what the advantages are even to them and and to those that they're in contact with at the job. So yeah, that's a great one. Um Councilmember Simmons and. I meant to say something about that.
And then the audit, we'll talk about.
Yes, we'll talk about the audit and it's kind of, and I can give you just a little bit. It's kind of the way uh Reagan explained it to me is that how we recorded our our carryovers. Um and so we had them, but I think the way that they were recorded. And so it was a minor. And Reagan can speak to that when we have our update. And I'll just have him shoot us an email and send it to everyone. But that's okay.
And my other question was, and um I guess our H R role, I know that that's, so is that been finalized or is that still um and maybe that's, you know?
Yeah. Can we discuss that? Um I can discuss that with you.
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, Councilmember Wilcox.
I just had a question about the uh submitting the goals. Andrew uh made a comment that they were due on Thursday and then earlier he said they were due tomorrow. So I just wanted to clarify when those were due.
They're due, did I say, they're due tomorrow on the sixth? Did I say Thursday in my email?
I think, no, I I think it was some other time you had said that. So I was like, I had Thursday stuck in my brain, but all right.
And I have one more thing to add um regarding uh pending litigation and to talk, you know, just to mention how important it is. Um when we do receive something that it does remain confidential until we have the green light to. Because every, you know, everybody can file a lawsuit or, you know, but sometimes they're not at that point where we need to uh move forward. But I do want city council to know that myself and staff have been um. A part of the process and that we have been watching and we were not surprised. Um when the official lawsuit uh came out, we were not surprised, but we are prepared. And so we want you to know that we have been um watching things very closely and that we are prepared. And um Mr. Byer has been working along with us. Throughout the entire process, which we hoped would have a different outcome, but we have in, you know, we have a lawsuit. So. We will, we will, we will deal with that. And we've also been working with our outside legal counsel. So um I believe we're in in good hands and we will let you know when we are able to have. Our closed session. Mr. Byer is working on that. And hopefully you can get some of your questions answered. Unfortunately, we can't talk about that. But I want you to know that um staff and our councils have been fully aware and we're pretty. You know, we are confident as we move forward and we will cool you in um when we have our closed session. So thank you for your patience. Um but please um have confidence in knowing that we do have our finger on the pulse and that we have been uh watching things closely. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager, for that uh report. Um are there any other um questions or comments? Okay, if not, Cloke Linga.
The next item on the agenda is just uh the communications indicating goal sessions are on the twelfth and the nineteenth and those will begin at six P M. Um we are on.
May I say something? I don't know if I want to, is there supposed to be two public comments or or did we miss one?
No, we do have one. We have one at the, or no, during the the virtual, we only have one. Is that, am I correct?
That's correct.
Right. Okay, cool.
So, yes. Okay. Um does that bring us, are we there yet?
I believe that we adjourned.
I support that.
Thank you. All in favor? All right. Everyone have a good night.